...for the December 11th, 2025 meeting. An announcement to make, any person may make a video or audio recording of the open session of a meeting and may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as the number and placement and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such a recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced and used during this meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the Director of Community Planning and planning pursuant to the open meeting and public records law. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. Is there anyone here other than the City of Gardner making a recording of this meeting? I see you're here, no indication, so that's fine. We'll start off with the presentations. Trevor?
Yep.
Are you going to use the video or just...
Yeah, I can put it up. I think probably we're going to start by going through the comments, or I can...
Sure.
...give a brief overview of where we were at last time we spoke. Oh, remote. Over here. Sorry.
Presenter is Trevor Fletcher of Graz. Is that right? Graz Engineering.
Yep. So I think the last time we met, I kind of gave a brief overview of the whole plan. It's a subdivision that we're proposing around the town line between Templeton and Gardner. And I think the review engineer was here last time. We went over some of her concerns and kind of addressed a couple. And since that time, I've taken the plans, I've revised them to her satisfaction. I think we heard back from her around 3:30. There was four outstanding items, and I just quickly resolved those. Thought she was going to be here tonight to address those, but I do not see her in attendance. But I know I also revised plans according to the city engineer's concerns, and we went through all those, and we satisfied all those requirements. So I guess if anybody needs a refresh, I can go through the project again.
Please.
Okay. So we have a 16-watt subdivision on which we're planning on constructing duplexes. Right here is the entrance. The town line actually kind of comes diagonal, which is kind of a unique feature because the right-of-way line continues here. So in this area, this is the right-of-way line and the town line. So the entrance is actually in Templeton, but the only portion that we're actually subdividing is within Gardner. And we are tying into sewer right up here, and the water main is going to go cross-country right up here and tie in at the location above, because that is where the water in Gardner across the street is, and so we wanted to be on Gardner City Water. And so that's what we had to do for that. In the front, we have a drainage basin, the front half of the site, all drains through street drainage, and eventually flows into here. One of the things we added was another catch basin right at the base. They didn't want water flow going up onto Patriots Road, so we captured all that and brought it back into the lot. So it's staying out of the right-of-way, so that'll satisfy Mass DOT's concerns as far as we're concerned. We will be going through Mass DOT permitting after we kind of settle things here, and if any changes warrant us coming back, we will be back just to show those changes that are happening in the right-of-way. Up front here, we have a common mailbox. We're proposing two spaces right here, and that's just for people to pull over, pick up their mail, and head off to their house. I think that's all of the notes there. Continue on back. That's just more of the development. The high point of the road is right in the center here, in this general vicinity right here. So this is where the flow switches from going forward to that first infiltration basin to flowing back here to the infiltration basin. And this is the end of the development. We have a cul-de-sac, and all the drainage right here collects, comes down into a drainage manhole here, and then disperses into the infiltration basin there. So yeah, I think... The only waivers that we are requesting for the subdivision, everything else, it's a by-rights subdivision, and we're meeting all the requirements of the subdivision rules and regs and everything like that, minus two items, which we discussed with the city engineer. It might just be a little outdated regulation. The first one is to use a plastic polyethylene pipe instead of reinforced concrete. It seems to be kind of an older regulation. The city engineer seems to indicate that the city uses the HTPE pipes all the time, so that shouldn't be an issue when the city takes over the road. And the second waiver is the drain manholes. For some reason, the subdivision rules and regs require a three-foot sump in the drain manholes. It's very common to have a four-foot sump, and a lot of cases is required in catch basins where the water actually flows into the structures, but those middle structures that connect catch basin to catch basin, they don't typically require sumps in those. So we're requesting that waiver, and the city engineer and DPW seem to be fine with that as well. Not really. We had a traffic study done. We had it done for the project that we were proposing before, and they had revised it for the new development for the 16 duplex slots. And I believe he is here if anybody has questions pertaining to the traffic study, and so we can address those tonight in more detail.
Just a question, something that you tricked in my mind about the water main. That's coming off of Route 2A, or is that coming off the other housing project?
So it's coming off of Route 2A. So there's actually, there's two different scenarios. So one, right where it comes right through here, it can go across the street and tie into the dead end of the water main along 2A right there. If the state doesn't want us to cross the pavement, because the state owns that whole red, that's part of the process, there is a way we could go cross-country within the right-of-way and hook up to where Deer Hill comes off. And that way, we won't be cutting through 2A.
Okay.
We'd be cutting into part of Deer Hill.
Okay.
So we're just going to deal with the state and see which direction they want us to go and...
But the sewage goes right out to Route 2A?
Correct, yeah. There's a sewer main that comes right down here, and then right at the base of the hill, it goes across, and then out back towards the sewer treatment plant, out down Plant Road.
I think the city sewage plant takes care of part of Templeton.
Correct.
That's why.
Yep.
Wow, what a memory. Okay. You can get any further? Any questions from you guys?
No.
Eric?
Yeah, I got a question, and forgive me if this was addressed in a prior hearing, but the drainage outfall from that infiltration basin next to 2A?
Yep.
The riprap, does that go into that drainage culvert when it flows over there, or would that just blow into the street?
No, that's going to be going into the culvert right there. Yeah, it's kind of a low spot. There's a guardrail, and then a kind of a drop-off on 2A right there where that culvert is. So all that flow is going north, and the drainage analysis point was the culvert, so we made sure that the three in the post, it is less water going through that pipe than every single storm.
Okay. And then I just had a question about the peer review letter. I didn't see the whole stormwater report, but I saw that it said standards two and three were just met partially. Was that just looking for additional information on those, or is it not?
Let me see. I'll get these. Two and three.
Or three and four, I think, actually. Required rechargeable annual water quality?
Yes, so I believe standard three was the, yeah, they said partially met. They want a clarification of what method we did for infiltration testing, and I had the GWOFL. It's basically a big long rod, and you pour water, and it's kind of a glorified percolation test for us. It's just a little bit more mathematically precise, I guess, and so I did those tests. We did three in each basin, and then you take the lowest of all those. So that's what they want a clarification on for that. They...
Required rechargeable annuals method.
Yeah, so the required recharge volume, we use the EPAS BNP performance curves, which they kind of newly came out with ever since they started requiring 90% TSS removal and 60% total phosphorus removal. And they found in their studies, depending on what the recharge rate is, in our case, it was .27 roughly inches of runoff over the impervious area, the area that needs to be treated, and we're providing .28. And I kind of went, she's still kind of wanting me to reevaluate on that, so I did. So we're providing .28 in our calculations. The infiltration rate, the actual infiltration rate, is a lot better than the chart gives, so that would even mean there's more treatment for the basins themselves. And on top of that, because Gardner requires you to also reduce all the volume in each infiltrator, each analysis point, we had to kind of oversize the basins. They're very, very large basins. And so in the infiltration basin one, we have over four times the required recharge volume in that calculation, and the one in the back, we have just under six times. So they're very lucky basins, there could be a lot of treatment, so they should function very, very, very well.
So do you want to go over your report now? Is that what you want to do?
I don't know if you want to go over city comments, or...
If I may, I can just offer to the board, I have reviewed the revised plans as well as Mr. Fletcher's written responses to my comments. I'm satisfied with the revision, so everything that was in there has been adequately addressed, as far as I'm concerned. If the board wants to go through them individually, that's up to you, but I'm satisfied at this point.
Most engineers have...
I'll save you that time.
If you say it's good, it's good. I know it is.
And as for the peer review, I mean, she had, I can go over the four items that she had after today. So the first one, let's see, most of them were addressed. The first one she had was she recommended that we add the, under the construction sequencing, add an item for site clearing. I basically just had setting erosion controls and then installing the sediment basins directly after that. She wanted an item right in the middle of that saying that that's when the site clearing is going to occur, so I added that in, and that's in the plans that I submitted today at 4:30. One of the ones was the question of, in a hundred-year storm, the emergency spillway is designed to be utilized, and she was questioning whether or not that was acceptable in the Massachusetts stormwater standards. So I've gotten this comment in the past, and I've looked into it, and if you look at the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, we're in their diagram for an infiltration basin, it shows where the water level is in the two-year, 10-year, and in the 100-year, just as a general concept. And the 100-year is above the emergency spillway, so as far as we're concerned, I believe Massachusetts is okay with that being used. Hundred-year storm is kind of an emergency, if you think about it.
It's a very rare, very rare storm.
She, in regards to the two waivers we're asking for, they're just going to defer to the board's judgment on those two waivers. That was her comment on those. The specific detail about mortar being used in manholes, I think she was looking for the precise composition of the mortar. I kind of indicated that mortar was to be used, but I didn't indicate the composition, so I added the composition per the subdivision rules and regs, so that's on there now. Last, one more. She indicated the riprap sizing that we have on all the basins, we typically design to the 50-year. I explained that in that, and she said she recommends as a condition to have the applicants provide those calculations prior to the start of construction to verify the erosion protection is adequate. But she didn't recommend a condition on that. Then we have the treatment amounts and the TSS removal rates that I just went over. That was a question, so I just kind of went through that. She recommended that it just be a condition that a SWIP is provided prior to construction, which is typical, because you've got to file a NIPD's permit, and that SWIP is part of that and prior to construction, so that will be provided to the DPW and everybody. So she recommended that be a condition. There was one item, requires description of construction and waste materials, chemicals, fuels expected to be stored and used on site. That is all typically right in the SWIP report that we're going to be doing before construction. So she wanted the board to determine whether or not that information should be provided prior to approval, or if it's acceptable to be included in the SWIP. I think it's generally, I mean, it's residential construction, it's nothing crazy, it's not a commercial operation, so we don't expect any crazy hazardous waste, but that's all going to be in the SWIP, anything.
Not using anything exotic.
Exactly, yeah. Just general construction stuff, and that's all typically in the SWIP. And then the last item that they had was, they wanted a 50-foot construction entrance. I had a 40-foot before, so I fixed it on the plan, but in the erosion control notes, it still said 40, so I switched that to...
Can you explain that more clearer, what that means?
The construction entrance? Yeah, so... Let me get the erosion control sheet. Right here. Well, right in, I don't know how to zoom into slideshow mode, but right here, you can see this area right here.
Okay.
So they, to protect the roadway from getting littered with dirt and everything with construction materials coming in and out, they typically require the first 50 feet just to be kind of a stone entrance in and out. And that way, you know, if it gets really, really clogged, they can, you know, fluff the stone, clean it out, or replace the stone if it's necessary. It's just all about, you know, keeping the mud and everything like that off of 2A.
I learned something tonight. I've seen them before, but never, you know, why did they do that? Now I know. Thank you.
And then, yeah, the last one was the, just the fire access. She was wondering if the turnaround at the end was adequate for a ladder truck. The turnaround at the end meets the subdivision rules and regulations for a ladder truck. I did a little diagram. Essentially, typical ladder trucks have a turning radius of 21.5 and 35.5, and we're providing 30.4 and 44.4, so it's like nine extra feet of radius there, so it should be adequate. And you'd hope that the subdivision rules and regs allow for a lot of trucks to make it around cul-de-sac, so...
Did you put that through the fire department, just to check with it?
Yeah, so I brought it up to the fire, I sent him the plans, and we went over hydrant placing and everything like that. That was another concern that they had. He didn't indicate any issues with the turnaround.
Good.
Yep.
Will be reviewed to slaughter after some?
I have.
It's okay.
Yep. Yes.
Okay. I guess we can get up to the traffic review now.
Yeah, yeah, funny. Anybody had any questions, or if you want to get a little presentation on it?
Will you state your name and who you represent?
My name is Steve Severia. I'm a senior project manager with the firm of Fuss and O'Neal of Springfield.
That's the report that we have.
Yes. We prepared on behalf of the proponents, the project proponents, in accordance with standard practice, a site traffic impact assessment, which was the report that was prepared in February, December. That report was reviewed by the peer reviewer, Tynan Bond. There was a series of comments on the report issued, primarily dealing with the presentation of the data, not with the substance of the report or the accuracy or completeness of our analysis, and did not question any of our conclusions, which were that the site access will operate safely and efficiently. This project, because the access is onto the state highway, the access will be subject to permit review by Mass DOT, and so all this same information will be presented to them and reviewed, and they will make their own determinations about whether they can allow the site access to occur.
Okay. Any questions, you guys?
So Mass DOT would notify us that they're satisfied with...
I'm not sure if they will notify the city or not, but once the permit is issued, then we can certainly provide the city with a copy of the permit.
Please do. Very good, thank you. I have a question to you, Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher. At a previous meeting that I attended, I can't remember which one, one of, there was either a member of the Templeton Planning Board or a selectman from Templeton.
It was me.
That was you?
Yep.
Planning Board.
Planning Board, okay. Could you restate what your question was?
Do you guys have minutes for it, like that? Did you...
Well, I just made, I was only going on by memory.
Okay, yeah. No, I mean, just, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and I had a couple of concerns in regard to mostly the act of this part. To this day, Templeton's never seen anybody, number one, you can't, what's that saying? You can't get there from here? You can't get from 2A to this project that Gardner sounds like wants to approve for all of Templeton. And I express great concerns for the traffic coming out of that, because we all know it's one thing to stare at a picture or on a piece of paper, and I know Mr. Fletcher knows this as well, so, done this personal, but it seems to me the design feature of this whole project, the road should have been shifted as far east as possible and not as far west as possible, giving somebody who's coming around that corner time to break before they hit somebody. I know, if I remember correctly, they said the numbers were marginal as far as just making the criteria for the sight line come around the corner. So that in itself concerns me. You're running a high percentage of the dangers on the calcs. That's what it was, that's how it came across at that meeting, and I think it was December. Basically, if Gardner wants to take the bull by the horns and approve the whole project and keep the whole project in order, because I don't see it flying through my board at Templeton, and if we don't have a visitor pretty soon, what, just exercise the appeals area, which gets lengthy for anybody. So if you don't want to play ball, we'll force your hand. Not personal, this is on looking for the safety of every citizen. It doesn't have to be just something in Templeton, but Gardner, Templeton, you know, we're all one big...
Big family.
One big family, one big community, especially when we have an accident or a problem here, and you're basically putting a bad situation coming out on that little stretch in Templeton. I don't like it. Not when there's the possibility to actually save somebody's life by giving an extra 100 feet of braking power coming around that corner. And I'll take that to my grave, I'm not going to set anybody up if I have the chance now to save somebody tomorrow.
And yeah, just to speak on that, after we had that discussion at the last meeting, we did seek the opinion of Christine Tree, legal, and she went through all the subdivision, you know, rules of the state of Massachusetts, and it's not going to constitute a subdivision in this town of Templeton, just because the applicant doesn't own any land that is being, that is part of the subdivision, so it really does not constitute a subdivision in the town of Templeton. So the only...
We're going to do the legal thing, then, fine. Do what you got to do, we'll appeal it, we'll drag it up to five years in court. It makes no sense to me, but if that's how the applicant wants to pursue, that's fine. I'm not taking it sitting down, simple as that, so we'll try the appeals. Appeals court says we have nothing, we can't do this, then we won't. But I know nobody's going to get their answer for a few years. That I do know.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, like I said, it's not personal. I know several people in this room, and I'm looking out, that's why I'm the chairman of the planning board. Not everybody likes the answers sometimes, but I'll be damned if there's anybody that can accuse me of not looking out for the general public, or in my case, you know, the citizens of Templeton, for the most part. This happens to be just on the line, it's kind of a, you know, screwy situation, but I don't have to be at this meeting tonight. I hope they don't have to stop at an accident here someday to pick up a dead child.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You don't have to size anymore than that.
Look at your laptop.
Open. I don't want to update.
That's what I did say in December, though, just so you know.
Well, I do recall it, I guess.
Okay.
Do you wear the one?
Yeah, I was the one. Thank you.
I just wanted clear and open...
Yep.
It's up to the owner what they want to do.
Correct.
Thank you. What else can we talk about on the project? It's up here for a reason.
I just restarted the slideshow.
Oh. Could you go over that again? Because I printed it out on my printer, and it's...
Over this, the cover sheet?
Okay.
He just started, restarted the computer, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. This is just the cover sheet, it just provides general, general information about the project, yeah.
It's too small for me to read.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Do you have anything you want to address?
No. At this point, I don't know where you're going. At this point, I don't know where you're going.
I don't either. We covered everything, we've done the questions that were raised by Tynan Bond, and those were addressed. The traffic study was addressed with corrections from Tynan Bond, or...
Is this a continuation of the public meeting?
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Is there anyone in the public that wants to say anything for, or I guess?
I just have a question for the traffic study.
Your name?
Gary Roberts, Stephen Wade, Templeton, and my mother.
Okay.
When was the study done? You redid it, right?
The data that is the basis for the analysis in the current version of the report was collected in August of last year.
This of 2024?
Did they take under advisement that there was a big construction project going on right up the street, and there was backup traffic, that people were avoiding that area for several months? So to get an accurate traffic study there is impossible because of the backup traffic, people were avoiding it, we weren't going down that area. Now that it's opened back up again, you're getting regular traffic again. So I think any study they got at that point was right in the midst of the heavy construction with a stopping traffic, rerouting traffic. I don't think the accuracy at that time would ever present what really is going on right now.
Well, personally, I know you, obviously, you're a Templeton resident, you live close by. I go to East Templeton frequently at all times of the day. I do recall the turmoil that was created when the project started, but in December, I personally don't think it was that busy.
See, it did in August.
Oh.
And that was right in the midst of it.
I guess it was busy, yeah. Don't know.
And they still have to put it inside, they were still in the midst, they stopped for winter, they're still putting in sidewalks and everything else, and haven't paved it all, so, yeah.
Something we guys have to think about. Okay, anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Mary Schaffer, East Templeton. I'm in a butter.
Okay.
Quite a number of houses are along my property line, so I am still concerned about some of the water. of the water issues that we have, that's been talked about here a number of times. There was a, I don't know if you can bring it up on your slide or not, I had sheet six of 18 in the plans, and they had a deep hole, do you want me to tell you so for the water?
Yes, so the, I guess, the deep holes up here?
TP3 and TP4?
Yep.
So on TP4, so they had like lom, lom and sandy lom, and had ESWT for 42 inches, and below that it says standing water, 64 inches, can you explain that?
Yeah, so the ESHWT is the estimated seasonal high water table based off of, like, modeling, so you dig a hole, and you can kind of see as the water fluctuates up and down and gets introduced to oxygen where the rust forms, so that ESHWT is 42 inches down from the surface. So that's where we indicate standing water is when we design the infiltration basin, and then the 64 inches to standing water is where we found evidence of actual water level, water table being. So that would be whether it's weeping from the side of the hole, or, you know, some, in some cases, in really, really loose soils, it fills right up to that level of the hole, but in this case, I believe it was just weeping from the side.
And I have a question still about the safety of the road that enters into the project. I don't know if you approve this project, if there's gonna be signage that's approved by the state to put in ahead of the construction for warning people. And I have concern about parking for the construction, you can't park on 2A, and the land that's in front of my property, close to 2A, if you park trucks in front of my property there, then it's gonna be a safety hazard already with either people being distracted by it or sight lines being reduced to get to that, in and out of that construction road. That site is still really scary to us that live in East Templeton, that Gardner area, and parking, where is the parking gonna go?
Yeah, I mean...
Construction vehicles and workers.
Yeah, when I, when I was doing my infiltration testing and everything like that, I pulled right on the side of, side of the road there, and there's plenty enough for my car there, so I'm guessing, you know, in the initial stages, stages, that's kind of where they're gonna set up. If they do have to impede traffic, then through the Mass DOT permit, they're gonna recommend, like, construction time, flaggers, and everything like that, that's gonna have to be provided if construction vehicles have to use, you know, side of the road or shoulder. So that's all part of the Mass DOT permit process that Foson O'Neil will be going through after approval, so it's kind of part of that, and then once the area's, you know, cleared, then they can start parking within the site.
How about the debris from the site, say in phase one, for instance? Where's all that gonna go?
So the debris, meaning...
You're gonna cut all those trees, how much is coming out, how much is staying, how long is it staying?
Yeah, that's, I mean, they're gonna cut it and probably store it somewhere on site, probably export the logs that they cut on site. We have stipulations that, you know, no stumps are to be removed until that specific area is ready to be worked. So before anything, before any clearing or anything like that, they're gonna put erosion controls on the entire downhill side of the entire site, so any, you know, silt or anything like that that gets mucked up by the logging crew, you know, any runoff that, you know, captures any of that silt will be filtered through that erosion control, and, yeah, they'll probably just, you know, designate a landing area for all the, all the logs, and then probably just take them off one truck at a time.
Are there any city rules for time of operation, time that you can start working in the day and ending time on weekends, is there any Gardner regulations on that?
Yes, I believe there are.
Do you know what they are, anybody?
You can't work on Sunday. I think it's Monday through Saturday.
Through Saturday. We'd have to look at it for sure, but there are hours that they stipulated.
Usually around seven till four or five o'clock or something like that, but most construction projects stop there on three in the afternoon.
And a question about, did you decide to be putting a gate at the end of the cul-de-sac that's gonna perhaps keep vehicles from going off-road into that undeveloped area for safety?
Yeah, that was actually one other item. I don't think Tiden Bond responded to that, but I'm glad you brought that up. That was one thing that we said, you know, we are considering putting one of those, you know, just like pipe gates or anything like that, if the board feels necessary, then they can certainly condition that to prevent access through that. I just didn't know, you know, if there was any reason for emergency vehicles or anything, I don't think they need to go back there, but I just didn't know how you guys felt about that, but.
I did see that in the report.
Yep. They were more than, more than happy to abide by that, if you guys want to condition that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike Bella Baba, 14 Stevens Way, I'm in the butter. I have a few questions. How many stages are we planning on doing this project in?
Stages as in, like, how many houses at once?
You're doing 16 houses at once, or you're gonna do four, you're gonna do a couple and then a couple, or?
I mean...
How long do we plan on it taking?
I mean, I think, I mean, I don't know if the applicant, it kind of depends on what the market's like and, you know, what the, what the funding looks like, but essentially, once the project's approved, it could go on one phase, you know. Clearly, there's gonna be phases in terms of erosion control and everything like that, obviously, all the basins and stuff have to be put in place prior to, you know, all that, and, but yeah, it's, it's really just kind of up to the funding, because once the subdivision's approved, I mean, the applicant could, you know, realistically, she has no plans on, but she could sell individual lots and have individual lots be constructed once all the, you know, features are in the roadway and all the drainage, so it's kind of, it's not a phased project in that, in that sense, but...
And it's gonna be underground electrical?
Correct.
As well. Is the lighting on there?
Yep, the lighting plans...
Oh, it's more than that.
Yeah, I see where you...
So, these are the lights, so, this has changed since the last time we were in. The city of Gardner was gonna take it over, they wanted less lighting. So we have one light up top right here for the intersection, there's one light right here to light up the common drive area, and then the lights are spaced at 300 feet intervals, and then there's one at the end for the cul-de-sac.
What's the height of them?
They're gonna be, I believe, they're mounted on a 20-foot pole. Yeah, and then they're, they're downcast lights, as you can see right here, and so it's, it's to prevent...
Are they gonna be Dox guy's compliant, or?
I believe so, yeah. As far as, I'm not the lighting engineer, but this is the plan that they presented, and the engineering, and no one raised any questions about it, and per the subdivision standards, they had to be compliant with the city of Gardner's lighting, so I believe that's typically what they use. And there's actually one more sheet. So this sheet kind of shows the spread of light, kind of hard to see, like this light right here, the extent of the conjurors board kind of right in here.
What are they talking for, for candles, like one? That's what all those little numbers are, right?
Yeah, they're a little blurry on this screen. Five, yeah, it's not really my wheelhouse, but, yeah, so, again, over here, the intersection's gonna be lit up like in this area here, and right over here, they did take into consideration the house across the street and tried to limit the lighting over there. And then, yeah, right here, this is kind of the extent of the spread for the, so that's right here.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Anyone else?
One more quick question.
Sure.
Gary Roberts, I'm butter again. Are school buses gonna be, once this project's going, is school bus gonna be going up that way? School buses?
Yeah, if there's any children in the neighborhood, yeah, I would expect them to accommodate.
So they'll be coming up from Gardner, turning into that spot, which is the most dangerous, you can't see. So I don't know any parent that would want their kid on that bus four times a day in and out of that area, 20 times a week, that they're gonna take a chance that they, when they turn left into that entrance, they're turning blind. And that's an awful lot of people to worry about, turning in a slow-turning bus with a truck coming around the corner that has no idea that that thing's turning right across the road.
Should be observing their speed limit.
Doesn't matter, you can't see. Once a bus turns, he's not going fast. He's turning, you've got trucks coming around the corner, they're coming up, over the hill and around the corner. It's blind, there's no way you can see, and the bus has to turn hoping there's nobody coming. That's a lot of consideration for the town to take on, that if there's a fatality there or a bus being hit, that's a pretty good thing to take into consideration. Not only the cars that come home every night are coming up that route and have to take a left into that corner, so you've got buses and cars, multiple cars, turning left into that spot every day, turning blind.
There's a speed limit blinking white, go eastbound.
Forty miles an hour, yeah.
Yeah.
And all the ground and trucks...
I don't recall seeing one going eastbound.
No, there isn't.
Maybe that's something that they convinced Mass thought to put in, to slow up. We can work on that. I know it doesn't give you the answer you're looking for.
Well, it's just something to consider, too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have a response to the question about the traffic counts during, during construction.
Please.
On 2A. We counted almost 5,000 vehicles a day passing the area of the, of the site access when we did our counts in August of '24. I have a, I have cap data from Mass DOT that the average daily traffic in 2023 was 4,429 vehicles a day. So I think our, our council represented a pretty, pretty typical condition.
I would say so. Anybody, anything? No? Should we close?
Yeah.
I have a motion. Do I have a motion to close this public meeting?
Can I give a quick update on the hazard mitigation plan? I know Trevor introduced that at the last meeting.
Okay.
So we're still...
You can close the public meeting, I'm sorry.
Huh?
At this time, close the public meeting. Or continue the...
I still can close the public meeting.
Okay.
Continue.
I should abstain from voting on this one, since I haven't been present for previous hearings.
Okay. Motion to...
Make a motion, we continue the public meeting.
Continue.
Do you want to close it, do you want to continue it? You won't have more answers throughout the court.
Now, what would be asked for?
I'm just wondering what other information we're waiting on.
Yeah.
I guess the state, that's the only thing, but that one would be notified anyway.
Doesn't affect that construction. If the state doesn't give the permit, then it goes down the chute anyway.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Public meeting is closed. Thank you. Now we'll go back on the agenda. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 10 December '24.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of last meeting.
I have a second. I have a second. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
I'm staying on that one, too.
Okay. That's approved. Was there anything else at just a minute meeting, just a minute?
The hazard mitigation plan that I mentioned. So I know it was mentioned at the last meeting on December 10th about the formation of the hazard mitigation plan, formation of the committee. The committee still has not yet been formed, but I did reach out to WSE, which is our contractors, for the plan. They relayed to me that, you know, in the interim, while we're still forming the committee, they're still reviewing the existing local plans for Gardner, gathering data, drafting list of assets to be used in the plan, as well as crafting a plan for community engagement. That's all I have from them, and hopefully we'll have more updates on the formation of the committee and kind of moving forward with that. The master plan as well, we're still waiting on the formation of the committee, but I am in contact with Barrett Planning Group, which is the main contractor for the master plan updates, and we'll, again, hopefully at the next meeting, have further updates once the committee is formed.
Great.
You gotta throw my name in on the hazard mitigation plan.
Okay, I'll send it over.
I thought I'm bragging, but I did over 25 years in FEMA. I didn't work in that area, but I somehow always got involved in that.
Yeah. I'll send your, your name over to the mayor.
Please do.
Absolutely.
I, I had a coffee with a friend of mine this morning, and he, he'd be willing to maybe volunteer for another, as another member of the planning board, because we usually have five, right?
Yes, that's right.
So we need one more, so. You're, you're a blessing, Eric. So I'll submit his name to you and whatever we have to do with that, or whatever he has to do.
Yeah.
You can let me know.
Move forward for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
So hopefully we'll have a full load soon. All business. Okay. We just had to end the public meeting with the Compass Road project. Do we want to approve with some limitations? Are you comfortable enough to figure out what's going on?
Yeah, I understand the project, I think just due to the mullin rule, I shouldn't vote on the formal decision, since I haven't been here for all the hearings.
Okay.
But I did, I mean, I reviewed the plans for the first time today, so I can't offer a ton of insight, but...
That's fair.
I don't have any dire concerns to express at this time.
The engineering department is happy.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with the plans as they are. I know there's concerns from the neighbors with regards to traffic and the location of the roadway. I can offer that Mass DOT will do their own review for safety, they'll review the traffic report, should they move forward with the project. I do know Mass DOT's permits are very restrictive in terms of parking, some, some of the things that were brought up tonight, so those permits are usually very, very detailed with what's allowed, a lot of things that were touched upon tonight, so I, I think as well as your review and your approval, Mass DOT, for them, will be not a hurdle, but it's certainly, Mass DOT will require a lot of information and probably work back and forth to finally issue a permit, so I, I think you have another entity looking at it that will offer their own opinions on traffic and, and safety. So that's a good thing.
That was another one of my questions, but I think you addressed it, that... That was another one of my questions, but I think you addressed it, that Mass DOT will control the things like traffic and parking.
Yes.
And, and all of that. So that answers my question.
Yeah, and typically, there's no parking on state highways, so they may prohibit that in their permit.
Yeah, they, they do get upset about that.
Yes, they do.
Do you think that they would, you know, I'm assuming you're aware that there's a, in the westbound lane in that area, there's a speed traffic warning on the west, going westbound? If there was one needed for the eastbound, do you think that they would?
That's, I mean, Mass DOT would have to find a warrant to be able to do that. They, they can't, they won't just put up new signage without adequate need. So they may evaluate that. It can certainly be asked of them, but unless there's an absolute warrant, they won't put new signage out.
What do you mean by warrant?
Um, that certain criteria are met to...
Oh, okay.
To warrant the need for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they'll probably take care of that. Okay. And we could bring it to their attention, so...
You could, but again, unless they can demonstrate to themselves that there's a need.
So what do we say? Doesn't matter?
Yes.
I work for a government like that. Okay. Think I've addressed everything. I have a motion to approve the Compass Road project as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the project as presented.
I concur. I like the idea of the Mass DOT coming in as far as site distancing, safety, and whatever else, as far as the, the concerns of the abutters and the safety of the citizens of putting it, putting it there. And with that, I second the motion.
I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion of that motion? I see here none. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there's one extension. No, no, there were no nays. Project is approved. Thank you very much. Mr. Fletcher, thank you.
Thank you.
We have nothing else to discuss?
Nope.
Make, make a motion, we adjourn. Second?
Second, a longer one.
Any discussion on the motion to...
I think that one's settled.
Motion approved. Aye.
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 Thank you.
Jason, maybe address the meeting.